Go ahead and call this regular meeting of the USD 431 School Board to order. Everybody's present with Jessie on the phone. Item three, adoption of the agenda. I think you added the one thing.
I didn't add it to any of the paperwork, but we need to add one thing to seven. That would be seven. Sorry.
Eight.
Seven each. Approval of chrome block bits.
Okay, I move to adopt the agenda as amended. Seconded. They moved and seconded, all in favor? Jess?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Passes second. All right. Opportunity for visitors. Don't think you had anybody scheduled to speak to me.
I did not, no.
Okay. Go to item five, the consent agenda. You have before you the cash summary, check registry, activities account, and minutes of April one meeting.
And the activities account is actually the activity within the activities account. We're still working on the reporting side with Skyward to figure out how to give you a line-by-line account balance, so.
This made it easier to read though, so.
Yeah. And that, and I mean, basically, that breaks down all of the officials' checks that we've written, all of, I mean, all of the entries, basically, any activity that's within the activities account there's, you know. And that, that is handled within this office, but Kylie handles 99% of the PO on this side. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. You are fine.
On that cash balance report, you know, the negatives in K-12 at-risk and vocational fund, those are, those are just transfers that need to be made out of the general fund. So, all of the money flows from the general fund into, or LOB into, into those respective two funds, and then any title, we request that money, just a reminder, we request that money after we've already spent it. So, so that's why that one's in the negative as well.
What's Title 4A, the name of it, just for curiosity?
So Title 4A is, so it's typically used to kind of supplement band music art technology programs. We, we use that a lot of times to, you know, to help send our kids to robotics. We've, we've spent some for band instruments and music.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions?
I move to a perp to change desk president.
My second.
My seconded.
Julia.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, old business. A contribution to the rec to help resurface the tennis courts.
So I did ask the city, you know, about the contribution. They do cover, you know, any of the maintenance to the facility that's out there, the bathrooms, the building, fences, and then they also cover the property and casualty and liability insurance. And so they declined to, to make a contribution to that, and, you know, I, I thought that that was okay. They had, they had talked to us maybe a little bit about contributing to the parking lot, and we had declined at that point in time. So, I still think it's a fair idea. We are a major user of the tennis courts and, and, you know, will continue to be, so. And, you know, this is kind of a side note, I've told Carrie and Taylor many times, through the spring, I walk in the park every night, and almost every single night, there's somebody on those courts. So, so it is well utilized. So, I, I think it's a good, a good opportunity for us to help the rec there.
I move to contribute $11,000, $300,000 to the rec to assist in the resurfacing of the tennis courts, as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Okay, item B, KISA 2024 report.
So, a couple of weeks ago, the administrative team and I went to ISDAC and went through the first process for kind of a, kind of a stoppage year in terms of what, what we're doing for KISA. It's kind of a reload to begin what the, what the next process is going to look like. I did want to go ahead and, and present to you today, this is a draft that will be presented to the State Board of Education, I believe, next week. And it's as good a summary as I've been able to find in terms of the direction that the state is going with KISA. On the left-hand side, there are four fundamentals, and those are four fundamentals that they've discussed for about a year now and continue to refine and determine what the definition of those are. Structured literacy, standards alignment, balanced assessment, and quality instruction. Structured literacy, you're going to see that in a lot of the different areas that we're going to talk about over the next year as we review state assessment scores coming up here later this spring. Standards alignment, you're going to see that a lot in our proposed professional development for the beginning of next year, and maybe even some during the summertime, so that we are taking the curriculum that we do have and making sure that it's aligned with the state standards. Balanced assessment, we, we understand and know that we assess our kids to death. We, we want to make sure that whatever assessments that we are giving, that they're going to be targeted and focused, and we're going to be able to use that data in a meaningful way. So, I'm not going to say that, that all of a sudden, we're just going to, assessments are just going to go away. We are going to continue to have state assessments. I do believe that we have a game plan administratively to look at our assessments in a fresh, new way to be able to make them meaningful and, and pertinent to the information that we want to get to you guys as well. And then finally, quality instruction. We're looking at tools and ideas of how we can not only do quality professional development to instruct our teachers on what quality instruction is, but also tools that whenever our administrators go into a classroom, that they'll be able to identify quality instruction. So, those are all four areas that will be identifying and clarifying through this summer as well. The structures, those five structures are kind of foundational structures that, that you'll see pop up from time to time, and then the lead indicators move on into, they're kind of the practical means of how that's going to look, and then the measures, the, the pieces of data that we're going to be measuring through this process. A lot of it, the HQIM, high-quality instructional methods, you see that woven throughout. You know, the high-quality instructional methods that take place, that are, that are designated and are trained on, whether it be our teachers or administrators, that moves the needle the most. So, so that is an area of professional development that we want to make sure that we're making sure our teachers know, when we say high-quality instructional methods, exactly what we're talking about. It's not just some arbitrary pie-in-the-sky type of information. So, we'll, we'll identify those things and make sure that they're there. And so, that, that is kind of the framework that is being presented to the State Board of Education, coming up in a week or so. Again, that's why it says draft, I didn't put that on there, that's not our thing, this is, this is the state KISA accreditation model. There's many more slides that I can share with you if you're, if you're interested, but I felt like that, as I've seen this one, it's been the most comprehensive overview of what KISA looks like in the future. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Our, our meeting went well, I felt like our administrative team really kind of presented exactly where we're at. We didn't try to sugarcoat anything and, and give a, give a false sense of, of, you know, oh, we have all of these great things happening, which we do have great things happening, but we have a lot of great things happening that are, that have been happening for many years, and we're, we're wanting to really hone and focus how that looks as, as we move into the next KISA year. So next year, in September, late, late August or September, we'll meet with our Kansas State Department of Education rep. We'll hone some of the things that we're doing in our presentation, and then again, in October, we'll meet with three districts of similar size, Pratt being one of those, which is one that we met with this year, and they're, they've, they've done a really good job over the last several years, and so, we're, you know, and then, at that point in time, it'll be a matter of meeting some compliance items, and as we meet the compliance items, then, basically, every year, we'll kind of hone and, and change, modify what we're doing, but meeting compliance and then refining and making what we're doing better will continue to give us accreditation. So, questions?
Thank you. Item C, bids for replacement of bus number three.
So I provided you Kansas truck, Midwest bus two, and then... And then the summary, there was also Kansas truck, oh, Coach Masters, I'm sorry. So the Coach Masters was an online portal, and I do have some pictures. It might be as easy to pull up the bus bids summary, and as we're looking at these pictures, kind of talk through that process. There are actually two buses from Midwest bus, they are 44-passenger buses, the mileage is on there, 187, 219. They're a 2023 and a 2020, and then the prices are there, 79 and 39,000. This is a very similar model to the bus 18 or the newest bus that we have at this point in time. It's just eight passengers less, and it's, it, it's, these are base models, these are not the higher quality, not necessarily quality, but the higher level that bus 18 was. You can see that there's no overhead storage in these. I'm going to point out good things and bad things. I, I really kind of like the, the pleather seats, I think that would be easier to keep clean than the cloth seats, they might be slicker too, but, I mean, that's, that's a good and bad. There's an air conditioner in the back and an air conditioner in front. You know, one of the things that is always, you know, used every time I get on any of the buses is outlets. These are retrofitted, it looks like to me, whereas on bus 18, whereas on bus 18, they're built into the side of the bus and more, more of a finished, or actually, I think they're up in the overhead compartment area, so there, it's a little more finished. It is the same style, there is less storage as well because of the wheelbase being a little bit farther, this is the storage down under here, but we also have the back door that we can slide things in the backseat. So, so, I mean, I think, I think one kind of, kind of counterbalances the other when it comes to the, this style of a bus. So there's a few more pictures of, of this style of bus.
With our current bus?
Mm-hmm.
You said S-18?
Yes.
Anyone? On that one, are there two units, like air conditioning units, or is there just one?
There, there's two, but they're, they're ceiling-mounted, they're up on top.
Okay, I just heard, that's one thing I've heard, is people saying that it's either, like, in the...
Yeah. Cool or hot.
Mm-hmm. So I didn't know if this setup was a little bit different, or the temperature might be...
So it's, yeah, and, I mean, if you're going to be in the middle, it's probably going to be either cool or hot, and then, you know, you may, you may get the, the blast of it if you're either up front or on the edges, so. So, yeah, that's, that's definitely a consideration in terms of the comfort. This is just the other bus, this is not, this is not any different, again, just, I think this one is the 2020, it's, you know, from, you know, 100 yards away, it's kind of hard to see that picture, but, you know, body-wise, they're all, they're all in really good shape. These are, both of these are lease, lease releases, so they'll, they'll be coming back, they'll go through an inspection. Both of the buses from Midwest bus will have no warranty. Okay? So, in terms of that discussion, we, we've started to utilize Dunin's as well, we feel like that that's a viable option if we can't get in over at Claflin, you know, for, for some of our mechanic usage. This is the one from Coach Masters. So this is a 52-passenger bus, this would be comparable to the bus we are, we are looking at getting rid of, bus three. It's an over-the-road, you know, type of transport that, you know, you know, it's just newer. It's a 2010, which doesn't sound real new, but down below on the, on the summary, the reference from Nickerson, they bought two of the very similar models that had almost twice as many miles and were three years older, and they spent quite a bit more. So, so that's just a comparison for, for everybody to be 100% up front. All of these have air brakes, so that'll, that'll limit, you know, who we have driving These have the cloth seats, and this one, it does have the under, under storage carriage like we do on, have on bus three, so it's, it's a very similar, you know, setup. This would be, I know this is Spearville's, so this is a comparison to the Kansas truck bid, because it's a brand-new bus, it's a converted, it's a converted Bluebird. Spearville did two of these, oh gosh, going on about seven or eight years ago now. I will tell you, the price was significantly less than what the bid was. This time, they are between 12 to 16 months out on that one. So if we ordered it today, we wouldn't even have it next school year. So, I, I was, you know, I was talking, I've talked to Becky, I've talked to Diane, you know, honestly, at this point in time, in terms of the used buses, I don't have a preference. We've had good luck from, from Coach Masters, we took bus three up there, had, had some work done on bus three, you know, I think that's a quality bus, we'll be able to get, you know, 200, 300, 400,000 miles on it, because I know Diane's done a really good job maintaining it, as long as we don't have something that just kind of sticks and, and we can't get it figured out. The, it, it intrigues me, the possibility of, you know, purchasing these two buses, you know, purchasing these two at less than the price of the Coach Master bus, we would have to rearrange a couple of things out at the bus barn, but we could park both of them inside, that would give us a spare if something mechanically were to, were to go bad on any of our activities buses. So, I, you know, again, pros and cons, I, I haven't, you know, I haven't really figured out anything. Back to, back to the warranty, the Coach Master comes with a 90-day powertrain warranty. So, in terms of, like, warranty, what we would be looking at, that's really all that's going to be offered on any of these used vehicles of this size, so. Questions, comments, concerns?
Do we have any of the maintenance records on any of the used buses for what has already been done?
I don't per se, but I can get all of those.
Okay.
But I, I don't have any of that.
Okay, and I was just, and then, the other question was, what, how many miles do we typically put on a bus in a year?
So an activities bus, we typically put, you know, somewhere between 30 to 50, depending on which thousand miles.
Okay, so based on, like, these both sitting around 200,000 miles, and that current bus three's at 400,000 miles?
Yeah.
That would give us approximately four years, based on mileage?
Yeah, four or five years, I believe we can do that. If you'll give me just a minute, I think I can find a little bit more accurate information.
Sweet. Just want to make sure we're not purchasing a maintenance dealer or anything.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I, you know, I agree with what you're saying, I, I mean, they're all mechanical, which you know as good as anybody, something's going to happen, you know, and so, you know, we, we'll just have to kind of come across each one of those as we, as, as we...
Just watch too many of the Carfax commercials.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And bus three was electrical issues, correct?
That, bus three, we, we started having a lot of electrical issues, exactly.
Okay. No, I like both of the Midwest bus options, I just was curious on the, how much maintenance had already been replaced on those two.
Would the limited storage on those Midwest buses, would that prevent, you know, certain sports, you know, from taking it, or...
I was, I was worried about that until I realized that the back, we could open up, and then we could, we could use the, like, the back three seats or back two seats to store, you know, pole vault, pole vault poles can go in and underneath the seats through this back door as opposed to putting them underneath. So I, I think we would be, I don't, I don't think it would limit us on, on that. So, I mean, it may, it'll be different, for sure, but I don't, I don't think it'll, yep.
Don't want it to be one more thing that you have to juggle, trying to figure out who's going to take which bus.
Right, yep, yep, I agree.
And the only thought that I had with the Midwest bus is only holding 44, that it, the football team would never be able to take one bus. It would either be the big bus, or they would have to take two, because they wouldn't all fit on one. So, just some of those bigger teams, like possibly track and football, they're going to have to possibly either take the big bus every time they go, or we're going to have the possibility of taking two buses along with the Suburbans, and so we may have to, you know, kind of look at that a little bit too, and see.
Does it typically take two, Patrick?
Yeah, they typically will take two, so that's, yeah. But, I mean, just looking at numbers, I mean, you know, we'll just have to make that determination.
So if they take two, the equipment could all fit on one, and then, you know, you put
Right.
the remaining teammates or...
Yep.
team members on that bus with the equipment.
Yep. Back to the mileage, so our two activities together, we, we put on, we put on 33,000 miles of activities. So that, I mean, if we split them half and half, we, we're only doing 15,000 a year for that.
That makes me a lot less scared of a higher-mileage vehicle. Not scared, but concerned.
What engines are in those Midwest buses?
I should know that off the top of my head, but...
I think the front end said it was a Freightliner.
They, yeah, they are Cummings 6B, or, or 6B 6.7 220 diesel engines.
Okay.
So I mean, both, I mean, I think all three of them are going to be diesel engines.
And had you had a chance to talk to Peter Silly's about the wrapping?
I haven't talked to him specifically about that, but that, that's the idea, is we would actually have, you know, see about having Peter Silly's do wraps on whatever we decided to do instead of...
It would be a little extra expense to, to do that.
With the new bus, did we, was that separate too, or was that, did that company?
We, so we, I think they threw that in, and then the guy that we kind of, the salesman, he came out and did that wrap for us. So he, he suggested we did the wrap, which, I mean, I think that's the way to go anymore. And then I think he kind of threw that in with that new bus.
Any other questions?
Anybody leaning one way or the other?
I mean, knowing the mileage per year, those Midwest buses, as long as their maintenance records check out, seem like they'd be good options, as long as it's not an issue that football or some of the larger sports have to take two buses and that doesn't cause a ripple effect, but if that's what they do now.
I mean, we always have the bigger bus as a backup too.
Yep.
As far as that goes.
And we'll, we'll rotate these, we won't just park one and, and let it set for a long period of time. I mean, Diane does a good job with working with Rose to, you know, whether it's, you know, buses or, or whatever, you know, because we, we do have a, we do have an extra short bus, and we rotate that on, on a weekly basis, which that plus Old Bus Three, we could sell both of those, which, which would then offset some of the cost of the, of these buses as well, so. So we're, I mean, we're, we're set with buses at this point in time, except for just one that, that just kind of gives us headaches every now and then, so.
With that option that you're looking at with two, is there another bus that's kind of creeping up on that mileage that, like, a year from now, we would have to be looking at buying another one?
None in our activities fleet, and, and we're actually probably three or four years away from any of our route buses needing to be replaced.
Okay.
So that's kind of the, the idea that, and Diane and I are going to sit down and take a look at that. We're limited a little bit more on our actual route buses, because there are some state statutes that we have to keep the, the years, and I believe that went out to 20 years, but we still have to stay within 20 years, and we're not even close to that, so I think we're in good shape on all of those as well.
Did you say how many miles the other activities bus had?
All total, it's right at 500,000, just, just under 500,000, for whatever reason. When we actually got it, they had, they had reset the odometer, but we have records to show that it, we got it with about 250,000 miles on it, and, and we've, we've put just under 250,000 on it.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Maybe want to entertain a bit, or a motion for a bit?
And we have money for own capital outlay for this?
Yes, we would be able to afford this out of capital outlay 100%, or we could split it between capital outlay and contingency fund. When we bought bus 18, I believe we split that 50/50, and did capital outlay and contingency, and, and we've kind of done that in the past. What I would suggest is, at this purchase, I would suggest we go ahead and do capital outlay because we have not replenished some of our contingency fund in, at least last year. So, the only way we, we put cap, contingency fund money in is when we have transfers at the end of the year. So, I would suggest this be capital outlay expenditures.
Sarah, what do you think? I'm fine with the, one of them. With the Midwest. Is everybody okay with the purchase of the two buses from Midwest?
I'm going to get their maintenance records. Okay.
If there's something glaring on those.
So, do that first, or?
Yeah.
Get the maintenance records first.
Is there a deadline to purchasing these, I mean?
I, I mean, all of these are even contingent on, I mean, whether or not they'll be there tomorrow. Yeah, availability tomorrow, so, so I'll request the, I'll actually do the request tonight, and then hopefully get those tomorrow. And then, I mean, if you, if you make the motion, we can have the, the P O drawn up by the end of the day tomorrow.
Sarah, would you be amenable to amending your emotion to say purchase of the two buses unless there is a glaring maintenance issue as seen in the maintenance records? Or? I can do it, Robert's rule!
You don't have to do Robert's rules.
I don't have to do Robert's rules!
See, you're saying it.
Okay, so, Madam President, I would move to purchase the two buses from Midwest bus with the qualification that we request maintenance records and there are no glaring issues that appear on those maintenance records.
Yeah, the total amount. 119, 162.
And truthfully, even if one of those engines had to be overhauled, you'd still be less than one of the other buses. Just knowing from what I know.
Yeah, if there's something glaring on them, I mean, I'll, I'll obviously, you know, be in communication with you guys about it, and, I mean, I, I don't see the, the Coachmaster bus going away. I think it, I mean, I think, I think they've had some other buses turned over, but, but that one I don't think has turned over. And I, I'll actually request maintenance from Coachmasters as well as Midwest, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
So, that's for two activities buses?
Two activities.
The two Midwest. All right, we will move on to number seven, new business, teacher grant bank.
So, I know the print is really small, I, I get that, because I just opened it again. But trying to get it on as, as many pages as possible. You know, every year, for, for those of you that are new, every year, we actually provide a $5,000 stipend or grant bank for teachers to apply to, that is sent out, you know, typically, oh, right after spring break, and then, and then that money is applied for. A lot of the uses are professional development, time to work on new curriculum that they have coming in, new strategies that they want to work on. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. 11 apply this year for a total of $4,900. So, I would recommend that we go ahead and approve all of those. When I got here, just, just as a, just as a piece, we did ask that teachers fill out a special timesheet and turn that in. And then after that is turned in, then we, we do go ahead and pay them that out on a, you know, typically around August is when that, when that money is actually paid out, August or September, giving them the, the summer to work through, to work through the things that they were working on, so.
And the funds for this grant bank come from where again?
General fund.
General fund.
Yep. Yep, we designate the 5,000 out of the general fund each year for that.
I would motion to approve the teacher grant bank application as presented.
Second in? It's been moved in second in? All in favor? Did I run out Tracy?
Just yes.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Your second in?
I'm sorry.
Becky did, or Sarah?
Sorry, okay, no, you're good. All right, item B, 2024-25 student handbooks.
So, this is just information for you guys, you have access to all of these handbooks. Mr. Kraft was out today, ill, and so he'll, I'll be getting his and I'll, I'll upload his as well. He didn't have any, he and I have talked about it, there's not any major changes for the activities handbook for the, for the middle, or for the high school at least, I'll check with Mr. Flowers. But just, you know, I know Tracy has brought up cell phone usage, and I've passed that information on to Mr. Mason. So, this is just your, your opportunity to kind of take a look at what revisions are going to be on those handbooks. I'll be reading through them this month as well. And I would suggest, instead of waiting all the way until the very, you know, the June 3 board meeting, you know, please, if you have questions or comments, let me know, and I'll relay that information on to the administrator so we can kind of have some dialogue with that as well, so that it's not just a hammer at the, you know, trying to make revisions all at once during that. But this gives you a little, least in time, a lot of the changes that I've heard and seen so far is just making things consistent throughout the buildings. I know middle school is working on that for middle school, high school consistency, you know, Lincoln to, to middle school consistency and Roosevelt to Lincoln consistency as well, so, so that's what, that's what those are, and you have your opportunity to take a look at those.
Tracy, what were your questions or concerns?
I had just been reading an article about what Hillsborough passed, well, what they were talking about passing it, hadn't actually passed yet. But it was literally taking the cell phones out of the kids' hands, placing them in some sort of either what they called a yonder bag, which I don't know what that is, or, you know, one of those shoe pocket storage things in the front of the classroom. And then, you know, the kids could have them back during, you know, passing periods and lunch. I just, I continue to see them as a huge distraction in class.
So, clarification, and I'm, I'm not going to make any editorials, the, the yonder bag is a specific bag that is then magnetically closed at the beginning of the day, and then, you know, maybe that is then stored in homeroom at the beginning of the day, and then at the end of the day, then there's like a device, like the Walmart, you know, magnetic opening device, and then it, you know, it opens those up at the end of the day. Joel has provided any, any type of funds or, or whatever a teacher would need for those behind the door pocket, that if they would want to buy those, he's provided, you know, any opportunity that they would want to buy those as well, because, you know, we talked about it a little bit, so.
Because some teachers do.
Some teachers do, yes, yes.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, they do.
Yep.
I know that not all do, and, yeah, they then become a distraction for the kids, so. One, I know there's some issues too with active shooter regulations and that, I don't know if it extends to
I know that was some of the comments that came out under the Hillsborough thing, but nobody, you know, referenced a regulation or anything like that. You know, it was just parent concern for their kid not being able to have their cellphone during something like that. So, that was brought up.
And I think that was even brought up by one of the board members, it's a law enforcement officer, and I, I could see that in one of the, the yonder bags.
Right, yeah.
You know, they are, they are pretty durable, I've not physically seen one, but I've, I've seen them in video, and, you know, it would, it would be hard to get them out.
Yeah, mainly what Hillsborough was doing was, you know, like the shoe holder things where they slip them in, whereas what they were proposing to do. So, that seems reasonable, because then if you have a kid that gets sick, or somebody has a doctor's appointment, or, yeah.
Make sure they're clear so you can see if they accidentally leave them in the pocket.
There were parents, you know, upset that they were taking away, you know, their communication with their kid, but we didn't have communication with our parents, they called the office.
Well, and, and as Joel and I have talked about it a little bit too, that, that is about half of what they see at the high school is the parents. And I know I'm guilty at times, but that's the parents texting the kids.
Oh, I've done it, I'm guilty of it.
I know, I know, I'm not, I'm not blame, blame on anybody, I, because I'm right there with you, but I, you know, that's, you know, that's typically what they see, you know, a lot of times, and, and my experience in the buildings, I've seen that as well, so.
Okay, item C, budgeting needs assessment fiscal year 2025.
So, this is actually, I provided you the state statute to go over this, and then this is just a, a beginning process. The, so there, there's a lot of different templates out there for, for the building needs assessment. I did provide you with the K S D E building needs assessment template, and I've provided you in the past with a filled out version of the ESDAC building needs assessment. And so, the, the basic premise is all the same, the difference between the two is the, the, not the ESDAC, but the Green Bush template kind of gives you some prompts as to what to fill in in some of the notes. So, this needs assessment, you'll notice that it's per building. And so, as one of our tasks at, at the end of the year, the administrative team and I'll, I'll walk through this student headcount, percentage of students of, of active I E Ps, percentage of students enrolled as English language learners, students identified at at-risk free lunch, pupil teacher ratio average, pupil teacher ratio median. Are the needs of foster care students being met? If not, what, what do we need to do? Are the gaps of student success among race, ethnicity, as ethnicity student subgroups? Is there a tiered system of support targeting reading? Is there a tiered system of support targeting math? Are there local assessments to measure reading growth? So, and then finally, are there local assessments measuring math? Are there learning opportunities for students to focus on academic needs outside the jurisdictional classroom setting? So, and then there's, you know, N and M, N and O that we can, that we'll take a look at as well. So, so we'll, we'll be working towards filling this out, and, and I want to kind of give you an update on this, you know, each, you know, each month, we have to fill, we have to approve this before we approve the budget. So, typically, we've approved the building needs assessment in August, and then approved the budget in September, because we've always filed that we were going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and so, so that gives us that extra month to be able to do that. So, so I'll keep you updated on each of these steps as we go through and provide you additional input. And then if you have questions about any of this, feel free to ask me about it. You know, it's, it's a, it's a piece in terms of like budgeting and, and identifying certain targeting areas that we need to maybe refocus some, some budget money to. You know, that's definitely a, you know, an area that I want to get better at. It's not, it's not an area that I feel like is a strength of mine at this point in time. And we do, I think we do a good job of making sure we have enough money to pay everybody and pay our bills and those types of things. But in terms of like specifically targeting, you know, gaps that we're, that we're seeing, we're going to get better at that.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to D, capital outlay planning, five years.
So, this is really to kind of say, I am working on something. When I got here, I didn't necessarily find anything that kind of gave me an idea of, of, you know, really that planning. That also ties into that strategic planning, you know, because obviously, you know, capital, capital funds can be used towards certain items, you know, obviously capital improvement projects, you know, buying buses, those types of things. And then, you know, general fund is typically on the salary side and the day-to-day operation. But the first page, and, and yes, there is red, because the planning, but now that we needed to buy a bus, that planning's kind of gone out the window, so we may have to, I'll move some stuff around, but it's a planning process. It's a, it's not a, this is not a set in stone type of document in any way, shape, or form. This is the summary for every page that you see after. So, each one of the pages that you see after are labeled with what they are actually looking at. So, miscellaneous, activity center, bus parking, or parking, the flooring, that was kind of started before I got here and is, and will continue. Roof maintenance, and you'll notice that there are, there are many of these that are blank because I don't even really have a reference point to even say, okay, a roof on Roosevelt is going to cost this much. I'm working with Corel Roofing to get a, a game plan with them, to be able to start plugging some numbers into this. One of the things that is tied to property and casualty insurance is that they're not going to cover full coverage on roofs that are 15 years or older, so that's a consideration. You know, the activity center has a wonderful roof on it, does not leak, knock on wood, but it's over 20 years old as well. So, if, if a, if a storm were to rip that roof completely off, there's a chance that it's not going to be covered at full coverage. So, those are things that we have to take a look at in terms of, you know, that capital planning. I'm working with P1, they have, with their, their monthly maintenance plan, they have documented and inventoried every single unit that we have for HVAC system, again, back to Roosevelt. Um, again, back to Roosevelt, those are our oldest systems. Those are our oldest, um, uh, heaters and air conditioners. Um, so those would be potentially the ones that, that would need to be replaced. So each one of the pages in the, is an individual tab on a, on a spreadsheet that all feed to, um, this first page and kinda gives an idea of where we would be. This is only looking at the amount of annual funds that we generate for capital outlay. So the $1.3 million that we have sitting there, um, is, I, I don't anticipate digging into that. Does that make sense? Um, because, because of that possibility of, of a catastrophic event, I want, I want that as well as the contingency fund to continue to remain healthy. So, um, so when I look at these projects, I, I'm, that's why it's red is because, you know, years 24, 25 and 26, it, it exceeds that. Does that, does that make sense? And that doesn't include roofing and, and, and some of those other projects. So I just want you to be aware that I'm working on this. I would be happy to talk to you more about it. Um, but, you know, it's, it's just kinda one of those that I've kinda worked on from time to time throughout. The turf and track payment, total payments for the year are over there as well. Um, we've been paying that out of capital outlay. Um, so, um, so that's budgeted in as well. And then after that is paid off, there's a budgeted amount of $200,000 to set back for replacement. Um, we wouldn't necessarily have to replace the track. Um, but in 11 years, 12 years, 13 years, there will be the need to replace the turf. Um, it, it won't last forever, um, but it'll, it'll last a long time, so. Um, so that's why that $200,000 is sitting there. So questions, comments?
So we'll likely be dipping into this amount in the red even further for next year with the purchase of the buses.
So I'll rearrange some things. I mean, we can probably defer the, the, the overlay of the, of the parking lot.
Okay.
And, and, and move that to, to next year. And, and I had some concrete, um, work planned for the front of the activity center that we'll probably put off until next summer. So, so, yeah, I don't, I wanna, I wanna rearrange some things and look at it a little bit more and try to get that back to where it's not red.
Okay.
So, yep. So, um, I mean, I can provide you a summary of this on a monthly basis if you want to. Um, you know, just what things are planned or, or quarterly, I can look at that as well, um, so.
I'd say I think quarterly would be.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll move on to E, selling of FBLA equipment.
Uh, Mr. Mason approached me, um, and there's a little bit of a summary, um, there uh, as to, you know, we purchased this. This was, this was purchased with FBLA funds for the, for the, um, red zone. Um, 100% out of, out of their funds that they raised. Um, they have been approached. Um, Mrs. Selfridge has chosen not to use the slushy machine, slush machine. Um, and so, um, Mr. Mason, uh, was approached, uh, by a family to, to purchase this. And, uh, you know, I ju, we just need your approval to, to purchase any, um, or to get rid of any surplus materials.
I move to approve the FBLA slush machine, the fence returned to the FBLA activities account as presented. I'll second it. Have moved and seconded all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, lease between USD 431 and ABCC Wizington daycare.
Um, Dawn and I have not had a chance to meet, um, on this. So this is, um, um, we are working on that to, to move forward with that, but I don't have anything to even present to you at this particular time. Um, they did open, not open, they did have an open house, uh, for the ABCC, uh, daycare facility in Great Bend. Um, and, uh, if you had a chance to look at your weekly update, uh, there was, um, some pictures, um, to show you. And that, that is going to be, if not exactly very, very similar to what we will be seeing, uh, in ours. A little bit smaller, um, but very similar in terms of the, the rooms, the, the materials, um, very high quality. Uh, everything was very well done and.
Very well thought out.
Yeah, and they, they have, um, gone ahead and approved, um, continuing to work with Icon Construction. Um, that is who built the one in, in Great Bend. Um, so that, that bid has been approved for our facility as well. So, so they'll be able to run a turnkey operation, um, at our facility as well. Already kinda having the idea of, of, um, you know, stepping in and knowing exactly what they're gonna be working towards, so.
Okay, um, item G, approval of curriculum for literacy.
So all four buildings, um, ha, have really been going through the process of, of approving, uh, literacy curriculum. Um, the high school has chosen to continue with, uh, the materials that they have in place right now. Um, maybe even better utilizing a couple of the materials that they're doing. Roosevelt is, is the same way with, with working through their, um, uh, pathways with reading. Um, both the middle school and, uh, Lincoln, uh, have reviewed. Uh, I believe they reviewed three other, uh, curriculum items, um, put them through a rubric, uh, consulted with, um, I believe ESDAC, uh, in terms of like, what is going to meet the science of reading, um, curriculum? And then also, um, uh, you know, done some reference checks with other schools that have, um, the Savis literacy collection in place. And so, um, so after that process and reviewing the bids and having some bids, um, reworked for us, uh, we'd like to recommend to accept quote six for grades two through, two through five. Um, that includes, um, the curriculum itself for a six-year period of time as well as, um, two means of professional development to help implement the curriculum. And then, um, quote four for grade six through eight. Um, and that is, that includes the curriculum itself, a supplemental piece, uh, for, um, writing as well as, um, the professional development, um, to implement the, the curriculum.
You said quote six and quote four?
Six and four, yes, I think on the notes, I didn't have that determined yet.
Can I ask a newbie question?
Yep, go ahead.
Just making sure which budget line item these come out of.
So these will be coming out of general fund.
Okay.
Under curriculum and instruction. Um, I believe I had somewhere around $200,000 budgeted, um, for that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And in addition to this program, the new program, the other schools will have the support they need through the remainder of that budget?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Since this'll take a good chunk of it.
This'll take a good chunk of it, but, um, uh, Roosevelt has, has done a good job of continuing on with the, with the consistency of the, the curriculum that they've used over the last couple of years and, um, bringing in trainers to retrain, uh, the teachers and, and, uh, will continue to do that. Um, you know, the high school we're working with, um, uh, with both Green Bush and, uh, ESDAC to bring in some trainers, cause literacy at the high school level looks a lot different, um, than at the elementary level when, when students are learning to read. Um, we're, we're, we're bringing in some people to help supplement, um, some of those secondary people that didn't necessarily gain some of that foundational knowledge, like myself. Um, that was not part of my education block. Um, but we wanna help them with tools and, and resources to be able to, to help students in literacy and reading.
And you said that we had the screenage for the dyslexia through FastBridge?
That is correct.
Okay.
And, and we plan on, um, supplementing, um, you know, a, a teacher or two within, you know, Lincoln and Roosevelt to kind of, um, become more or better experts in using those tools in FastBridge.
Right.
I move to approve the purchase of quote six for grades two through five and quote four for grades six through eight as presented. Do you need the total? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, item H.
Thank you.
Chromebook bids.
Oh, yeah. So, um, we always try to get the Chromebooks purchased. Um, you know, we've had, we've had years where, uh, it was way late and.
It just didn't work out.
It just didn't work out right. So it was a PO that was hanging out there that I didn't realize was sitting there until way late. And, um, so, um, uh, Kerry does a great job of getting, uh, multiple quotes. He had four quotes this year. Um, you know, you're more than welcome to take a look at these. Um, we did come up with MNJ, is that a new one? No, okay, so MNJ, uh, we purchased 170 Chromebooks, uh, and that comes in at $53,159 and no cents. Uh, this includes, uh, 170 Chromebooks, 170, uh, Care Pack and 170 Google Chrome, uh, OS management.
That's wrong.
What?
I forgot to cross something off. Scratch the Care Pack.
Oh, scratch the Care Pack?
Should just be Pro Books and licensing.
Okay, sorry. No, that's okay. So I'm gonna re-figure that one real quick.
In my spreadsheet, so that was.
36, 622. So that bid comes in at $41,950.90.
That's the number I remember.
There we go. I know, it all, you can always remember those numbers if they're said out loud. Uh, next closest bid, um, uh, $43,000, $44,000, uh, one was $53,000, so. Um, and we've worked with, um, we've worked with them before. I didn't remember working with them before, so. Okay, so they've done a good job. And if Kerry likes working with them, then that's good for me too, so. Um, that gives us the opportunity to get them here and then we're not sweating getting them here. Uh, and then we typically try to pay for them out of the current fiscal year. Um, and then that way, that way we have that, we have that already taken care of for, um, the bits that are what is coming in. Um, so we're not, um, we're not hitting our, um, new budget with the $50,000 expense, so.
What was the name of the contractor again?
MN? MNJ Technologies.
I move to a bit, uh, approve the Chromebook bids from MNJ Technologies for 170 Chromebooks at $41,950.90 to include the licensing as well.
I second.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Plus a seven zero. Okay. Item eight would be the reports. Due to the, um, potential for, uh, foul weather tonight, I did tell Patrick to let the admins have the evening off and kinda shorten our meeting just because it was a long weekend with graduation. So they did put their reports on here, so you guys can just go through them, look at them. Don't think that there's really anything significant on them.
Um, you know, this Friday, I, I mean, I, you guys are all welcome, um, for, is it this Friday? Yeah, for, um, eighth grade promotion, so, um, it's not as formal as, as, as high school graduation. I mean, I think in the past it's been, you know, Becky and Jesse have, have been a part of that, Sarah maybe, um, from time to time. So, I mean, it's, it's kinda your availability as to whether or not you wanna participate in that. So just let Mr. Brungard know and, and, uh, you know, we'll go from there. Let me know and I can let him know. Uh, like I said, Mr. Kraft was out sick, um, and he, you know, he was unable to get me a report.
Just one more, do you have a report?
Yeah, I've gotta try to do a brief report. Um, I know Trish is like, okay, great, he's gonna do a brief report. Okay, okay, so, um, you know, summer projects, Tyler and I have been talking about, um, the waxing and cleaning of carpets and, and cleaning of the rooms, uh, through the maintenance, uh, staff. We're, we're working on that schedule as well. Um, May 14th and 15th, I kinda alluded to it earlier, is the State Board of Education, um, meeting coming up. Um, you know, like I said, one of the main things they'll be looking at is the KISA accreditation plan, excuse me. Uh, May 16th is the last day, uh, with students. And teachers will have a work day and check out, um, on the afternoon of the 17th. Uh, May 10th, which is this, this coming Friday, is both, uh, regional baseball is gonna begin as well as the middle school, uh, eighth grade promotion, uh, will be at seven o'clock that evening. So just keep those things in mind. Um, many other items, um, to wrap up at the end of the year, um, a lot of times too many to mention. Uh, checking, you know, check the app if there's, um, like for Lincoln and Roosevelt, um, assemblies, um, you know, check the app or their Facebook pages to, to get those dates and times for all of that. May 22nd, uh, we're bringing Jen Stettler in. Uh, she's a consultant with, uh, Southwest Plains Regional Service Center. Um, she is top-notch in terms of, um, curriculum and, and instruction. And she's coming in to provide some professional development for our admin team on some of those highly qualified instructional, um, uh, methods. Uh, so she'll be working with them on the 22nd. I get to attend the annual meeting for our property and casualty insurance group that day in Wichita. So I actually would rather be here. But, well, that's the way it goes. Um, Bart's Construction is planning on, uh, starting that construction process on the, on the press box the first week of June. Uh, I believe they've got, uh, windows ordered, uh, countertops ordered, and they're starting that process already. Um, and I'll just roll right into legislative updates. So we talked a lot about SB 387, um, that did pass. Um, so last time we talked about it, um, Senate Bill 387 had a lot of pow, policy in it. Still has a lot of policy in it, but one of the main sticking points was the new funds that they were infusing into, um, special education were going to be counted in the configur- were going to be counted in the configuration of your LOB configuration. So, currently, when we calculate how much we are going to set the mill rate for our LOB, special education funding is not calculated into that. And so, there was, I believe, several compromises that took place. And that calculation was separated out. And right now, it's a clean 75 million will be infused into special education, which will help offset how much money we have to spend out of our general fund to pay for our special education services. And it will not, not directly affect our LOB taxes, taxes that are our local people taxes. So, that was a win. Everybody was really excited about that. It is a different funding formula, and so, they are still working through that process. Hopefully, you know, I don't have any real estimates on how much that will affect us, but it will be an effect in the positive. There is still a lot of mandatory transfers. There's a lot of policy within that, but that was, that was a win in terms of special education funding for the future. The tax bill that the legislature, both the House and the Senate passed, will almost, almost likely be vetoed by the governor. When that happens, the only reason I bring it up is that when they go back to special session, everything's fair game. Not just the tax bill that they've struggled to work through anything because they passed a tax bill at the very beginning of the session. They tried to pass a tax bill at the very end of the session. Neither one of those would be approved by the governor. She's already said she's going to veto it. But then, all of the work that was done on 387 is still free game. So, we're still not out of the woods a hundred percent. You know, they, I, you know, they've kind of, I don't know, they've kind of... The tax thing, they're really having a hard time coming together on. So, so, we'll kind of see how that goes, and I'll keep you updated as that moves forward. And I'll keep you updated as we get ideas as to how much, you know, additional monies we may receive, you know, next year. So, I don't have, I don't have any estimates on that to this point.
Anybody have any board member reports? I would just like to thank you all for showing up for graduation yesterday. It was a good day. Can't believe another one's done already.
Yeah, I hear you.
And congratulations to our robotics team too, with that note on the update for their performance at Worlds.
All right, we'll move on to item nine, consideration of district personnel. I move we go into executive session for 20 minutes pursuant to discussing non-elected personnel under the KOMA exception for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Crowdes. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 8:35. Then moved and seconded, all in favor?
Don't forget me.
I know. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Out of executive session with the following motions. I move to accept the resignation of Jordan Money from Paul Tennis. Second. We can just run through all of these and then pass if that's okay. I move to accept the resignation of Janelle Rugan, her retirement from title teacher. Second. Tracy? Okay, I move to accept the resignation of Augustus Anders from middle school teacher. I move to accept the resignation of Denny Lewis from high school social studies. Second. I move to accept the resignation of Patricia Evans from food service and office clerk end of school year. Second. I move to accept the resignation of Hannah Lauren as middle school teacher at the end of the 23, 24 school year. Second. All right, those are all of the resignations. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Okay, nominations, sorry, my page is... Oh, sorry. Okay, item C, resolution of intent to non-renew a teacher's contract. I move to pass the resolution of intent to non-renew Christina Ball from the position of 512 instrumental music at the end of the 23, 24 school year. Second. Then moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, now we can move on to nominations. I move to accept the nomination of Stephanie Lomas for the position of fifth grade teacher. Second.
Tracy, did you get that?
Yeah, sure. Whoever wants it.
No, you said it.
I did, but yeah. I move to accept the nomination of Hannah Kiesling for the position of title math at Lincoln. I move to accept the nomination of Mary Rossman for the position of title reading at Roosevelt. Second. I move to accept, well, I don't know, maybe we have to...
We just vote on them individually if you want to.
Okay, we'll go back to the Stephanie Lomas. It was moved and seconded, all in favor for the fifth grade position?
Yes.
Okay, passes seven zero. For Hannah Kiesling for the title math, it was moved by me and seconded by Sarah. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. For Mary Rossman for the title reading, I moved and Tracy seconded.
Julia seconded.
Julia did, sorry.
That works.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, that'll pass the seven zero. I move to accept the nomination of Casey Bowers for the position of instrumental music, five to 12 as presented. Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Five to two. I move to accept the nomination of...
Yeah, should leave that one off.
I'm just getting to that one.
Okay.
I'm getting there, she's...
Okay.
She's next.
Do you, do you want to do that one?
Do we want to wait on that one?
Do you want to wait on that one?
You're going to wait on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll skip that.
Okay.
I move to accept the nomination of Samantha Martin for a position of Roosevelt Secretary as presented. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Jessie?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Five to two.
Was it? Six to one?
Six, one.
Oh, six, one?
Yep.
Sorry, hold on. I didn't see a hand over there, I apologize.
That's her big cup that's in the way.
It could be. Okay, I move to accept the nomination of Tony Moore, who is returning for summer help, and Jason Robinson, who will be in new position for summer help as presented. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, I think I caught all of them, didn't I?
Yep.
I move we go into executive session for five minutes pursuant to discussion, to discuss the exception for employer-employee negotiations, sorry, under KOMA, to discuss negotiations, training, and negotiations letter information with Mr. Crowdes. The open meeting will resume at 8:50. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Passes all. Thank you guys, sorry about that, that wasn't...
No.